Evening everyone, I want to welcome you to our La Salle City Council meeting dated July twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting order. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with all but the big injustice for all. Council members, you're all giving your packets over the weekend. Hopefully you had time to look more, study a little bit, reach out with any questions. With that said, I will look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. To Councilmember Sullivan seconded. Any other discussions, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes and a noes. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda considered routine have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. These items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member, citizen, so requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. Mr. Roby, do you want to review these ones?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only three items on tonight's consent agenda. The first is approval of city council minutes from the July fourteenth regular meeting. Second is approval of disbursements through today, including three items over twenty-five thousand dollars. The first is the Magic Turf payment on issues number one and two for the Bruce Frank Field project, over seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. Second to Niagara Power Transformer Substation Transformer for the electric utility, thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents. And finally, the Resco, also for the electric utility for the North Forest Street Electric Distribution Project, player, thirty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. And finally, item C is the lizard lions club twenty twenty-six law for gambling permit application.
Thank you, Mr. Roby.
That's the first time we've seen that.
I believe so.
So this magic turf thing, I thought I read in the minutes that the city approved like ten thousand dollars towards something. But it looks like we're going to be paying out significantly more.
Can I just have real quick, we're going to hear more from Mr. Feeny here. He's been running that project. I think they're running on about a bring it if I'm wrong, we'll hear about it later, about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar renovation of the ballpark. And the city has promised to help out with ten thousand dollars of that. That is a bargain for us because we own a property. We're only putting in about six percent of this renovation. The rest is being raised by donations, so.
Okay, so have the donations been raised? They have.
This gentleman's going to tell us all about.
So that, so that, so it still shows up as we're going to approve this amount.
Because the debt is still paid by the city.
I see. Okay.
It's based their past, is that correct, Joe, basically?
That's correct, which is what item seven A will be, which is consideration of acceptance of the donation from baseball association and also approval of the payment application. So the payments will run through the city and then donations come into the city from the association.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Good question. With that said, any other questions for Mr. Roby regarding consent agenda? Otherwise, I want to make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. I think Mr. Huntington seconded by Councilmember Williams. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes and a noes. Moving on to public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make comments must sign up in advance of the meeting on the sheet provided and identify themselves by providing their name and address. I believe we have one person, and that would be Mrs. Mary Beth Feeny. How are you tonight?
Well, I'm still steaming.
Okay.
Not because of the weather.
This, this is your opportunity. Do you want to step up to the podium? Pull your microphone down.
I must be getting old because I can't hardly hear what you guys are saying. You don't use your microphones like you should. I got up this morning and I went out and I had a front end loader tearing up my lawn. Come to find out, they put in a walking path alongside my house. I was not notified of any of this, and I was not a happy camper. In fact, I'm sorry, I blew Joe Roby out thinking he was the mayor. I said I didn't think long enough. Yeah, I thought Joe was the mayor.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, okay, he's got broad shoulders. I'm sorry, Joe, I apologize for that. But I couldn't see why. I don't, what's it going to cost to do that? Does anybody know? They, they took all the thought out. They worked all day. They watered it down, and now I don't know when they're going to put the cement in. And then I don't know who's going to maintain it. Because I'm not going to. If you put it in, you're maintaining it. That means in the winter, when the snowplow comes and puts five feet of snow there, you either clean it off or you let it go. Because I'm not getting out of there. I don't need to do my own. I mean, at my age, I have someone do my lawn and my snow removal. But I want to know what it's costing and why, for one block, it has to be put in. And why didn't they put it on the other side where there wasn't any property and it's your property?
Mary Beth, keep it, I can call you Mary Beth.
Fine.
Yeah, keep in mind, this isn't question and answer time. This is your, your time to make comments. You can ask more of these questions.
Well, I just wanted to know how much this one block of cement is going to do it. And it isn't bad enough. You didn't put it up close to the curb. You left a good foot or so in there. That's going to have to be mowed.
Okay.
Why?
Yeah.
Did you get her address?
Oh, it's two oh five Hill Press Way. I live at Berry Street, and you turn into Green Park Knolls on South Park Lane. I'm the first house on your left, and it's all along the west side of my property. Do I have to pay taxes on the improvement that you do? Well, it's kind of a question and answer. I want to know, know why you did it and I wasn't told about it.
I think, Mary Beth, now if you want somebody to speak, I will speak.
Yes.
This community is all about safe and recreational walkways for people. That's a very, very busy intersection there on Berry Street with kids coming to the high school, the junior high school. There's no, there's no sidewalk on the other side of the street for them to get on to get across the street. I think it's, it's a necessary thing to have. As far as the ballpark goes, maybe Mr. Roby or Corey can speak to that. I think they need a certain amount of feet to have the sidewalk off of the street.
Okay.
And nobody, Mary Beth, nobody expects you to be out there shoveling thirty-six inches of snow on the worst day of the year. Nobody would expect it to be.
No, but I mean, I wasn't told they were even going to do this, and that's what really.
I, you know what, Mary Beth, of all the things you've mentioned, that, that kind of perplexes me too. A notice where the next, yes, I'm, I'm in your camp there. Yes. But these questions you just asked, I will have Mr. Roby look into what the cost is going to be. This is, this is part of.
In one town, I think every town got a couple of signs to put in the middle of these busy intersections. Stop pedestrians crossing the crosswalk. It's a state law. You stop for them, but people don't. I wanted to go across from my side over to the park one day. Cars kept going by. Pretty soon, one car pulls over, gets out, says, would you like to go across the road? And he escorted me across, which I thought was wonderful. But it was, I was going the other direction. I have no issue. I've lived there for forty years. I have no issues with getting across that highway. It is not busy anymore. You don't have Park Elementary over on Fifth Street. You now have it up at, up at Kingsway. The high schoolers, they drive or they ride their bicycles, and if they walk, they stay on Berry Street. They don't come that much into Green and Park Knolls.
I understand. It's, it's, it's.
But did you do camera work or anything to see how many people actually walked and had to stop at that intersection? Or as they came, came across it?
We had a community celebration, as you know, this weekend. That's going to.
What a different situation. This is a day-to-day situation. Is, was it necessary?
I understand, Mary Beth. I understand the frustration, and when school starts, it's going to get busy there again too. So. It'll get busy there when school starts also.
No, it's not. Not that busy. If it was that busy for children crossing, you could have a guard walking them across. You used to. They'd walk from Park Elementary over to that corner. But at that time, I think there were maybe ten kids that crossed the street.
Mary Beth, I am very sorry you feel this way. I am. I, I feel bad. Okay, we've reached our five minutes. I would like you to write some of these questions down, or if you've got them fresh in your mind.
Okay.
Come see our city administrator.
The city manager, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And he will, he will give you whatever you want to know as far as costs and things like that.
Well, I did talk to Joe on the phone. He was fine enough. I was trying to find out if he had an office upstairs, thinking he was the mayor. Don't ask me why.
And was he real polite to you?
He was very nice about it, but I still don't see it, think it's necessary. You just need to paint the lines on the street a little bit darker.
Okay.
People should know that if they go walking, you walk facing traffic. I think, as far as, I know it still is that way.
Mary Beth, we have reached our five minutes.
Okay.
I, I do feel bad for your frustrations. I do. And I feel bad that you were not notified. Thank you.
Tell me about it soon. I'll send it down.
Well, you're, and you're, we welcome you here. Appreciate it. With that said, that takes the past public comments, I believe, which was on the city administrator update. That's him, Mary Beth, right there, city administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The twenty twenty-five three utility electric undergrounding projects continue to make progress. If you haven't already, please, my bi-monthly reminder sign for the, the weekly bulletins that are emailed out by our engineering team. Design church utility project is underway. The EDA met earlier tonight to discuss a lot of other things. The DNR grant for Legion Park and the Park Elementary Tip District Establishment. The EA did vote in favor of sending a resolution to city council in August, asking the city council to call a public hearing associated with the establishment of a tip district for the redevelopment of Park Elementary. This coming Friday, Personal Budget Committee will be meeting to discuss the twenty twenty-six general fund budget. I want to thank the Lister Chamber of Commerce and all the businesses and volunteers who helped with Summer in the Valley. It was a great event. Lots of people downtown, perfect weather. A lot of work went into that. So thank you very much to everyone who came on to support that and who made it happen. And I realized, the second minute, this last meeting before the fable Johnny Days, so I wanted to invite everyone out, August first through the third, to Legion Park for all the festivities. I want to thank the committee and all the businesses, all the volunteers, everyone who made that happen, and thanks certainly to the city team who put in a lot of extra hours to make sure that the event is safe and goes off without a hitch. The next meeting of the city council will be Monday, August eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. Anybody have any questions regarding his update? If not, that'll take us into the regular agenda, which starts off with item seven A, Bruce Frank Field improvements. Mr. Roby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll give a quick summary here, and I'm going to turn it over to my friend, Mr. Dylan Feeny, who's my great partner in all this. The city and the Lister Baseball Association have been working collaboratively on improvements for strength field over the last several years. The association has recently conducted, as referenced earlier, a large-scale capital campaign to raise funds for current improvements, including the resurfacing of large areas of the field and improvements to structure and safety of backside home plate area, some other things. As the field is a city park, it's appropriate for expenses for these types of improvements to run through the city. It shows up on the city's listed capital assets. So the having expenses associated with those, those assets is certainly important. The association is then in turn donating the capital campaign funds to the city to reimburse the expenses. And as the mayor mentioned earlier, in, as part of the twenty twenty-five general fund budget, the city council did approve a ten thousand dollar contribution toward the improvements. And with that, Dylan, I'll let you, I've got the clicker here, so I can sort of through the slides.
First off, I want to say a very big thank you to all the city staff for being involved in this project. This was something that had been in the works for probably the last three to four years. Started with my, my dad and Craig Fritz really coming together with a company that we ended up not using. But it was really started with that, trying to understand what the problems were with Bruce Frank Field. We had a lot of safety concerns, a lot of clay concerns. We had very poor drainage. We had core irrigation system. Our mountain home plate were in desperate need to be redone. So this was really a huge undertaking that started with my dad and Craig Fritz. And then we started to get more and more involved with Mr. Roby and Joel Schmidt and Shane Meyer with the city. And it was actually Joel Schmidt's recommendation that we talked to this company called Magic Turf of the cities. Both this company, Magic Turf, and the previous company we were talking to, Minnesota Sodding Company, had both done work all around the state. They had both done work with the Twins. We had, had both them out to the field. They both gave their respective bids. And it was through different meetings with us between city and the association that we ended up selecting Magic Turf. And to say the least, I am very pleased with the selection. Both companies are, were amazing to work with in the planning process. But I'm very happy that we went with Magic Turf. So the, the first image you see on the left is, from the first day, was when they skimmed all the sod out of the infield graph and the infield federal territory. What we ended up doing was all the infield was sodded. The reason that was, was because of a need to sod that because that's where most play happens. The outfield, this is after they started cutting the grass down to the root. The grass you see that's left is where it kind of should have been. Okay, so what they ended up doing this past Friday was a, what they did was called a phrase mowing process. They brought in sand. They leveled it off and they seeded it. And the reason we did seeding in the outfield rather than sodding was it was a lot cheaper. And both companies had said that this process is working very well on baseball, softball, soccer fields everywhere where they have a large amount of grass. And it's a lot, lot cheaper and more just easier to do than sod. So we were very happy with those, those two options. You see here, there's no backstop and no netting. We had some major concerns with the netting. The backstop, I believe, was constructed about twenty, twenty-five years ago. The netting was installed at the same time. The netting was held up by zip ties. We ended up working with Dell's Construction on a plan to redo the backstop and the netting. We originally had gotten some plans from the Irish yard in Green Isle to a concrete backstop. But we ended up mixing that plan and we end up doing a new plywood backstop. That's what we previously had as well. Sidewalk lumber and they sort graciously donated the lumber. Dick Moriarty was gracious enough to paint it. And the city was, uh, city donated the paint. The city helped deconstruct the current backstop. And so that's all in the dump. And we're also going to have like real padding on the back. Before, we had this rubber that would kind of destroy the baseballs whenever there was a wild pitch. So this is, the padding is more what you see at Target Field and CHS Field where the St. Paul Saints play. It's going to save the life of the baseballs a lot more, and it's going to look a lot nicer too. You go to the next one, please, sir. Because we were able to raise enough funds, I believe, when I checked last, we had a little over a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in our account between, and that's including the city's ten thousand dollars. We had a necessary thing that we thought needed to be done was the large press box about the visitor dugout was in very poor shape. It was rotting and it was really beyond repair. So really, a week and a half before the tearing apart of the field was going to happen, we talked to Matt Dur and he was able to get the press box out of there. And so right now, it's a chicken coop in Brinkley's yard, but the, the poles are sitting in right field. Eventually, what we want to do right there is maybe do a party deck, but that's way down the line. That's something that we feel is a necessity, or I'm sorry, more of a want. So that's kind of what our ultimate plan is there. The home plate there, we have a new clay amendment in the, in, in the clay, uh, home plate in the mound. We had a different product before. They ended up switching us to a different Durag Edge type product, which is what they use in the minor leagues. This clay is going to make our mountain home plate a lot easier to maintain. It's going to make it a lot safer for our players. One of the problems we had was always being able to make sure it was flat and maintain it right, at home plate especially. This will really fix that. The picture on the right, we can come a little bit further on the backstop since then, but that was, I think, the second week of progress on the backstop. So you can see there the padding. The backstop is the same height and the same, same length along the whole stop. One of the changes though, instead of zip ties with the netting, is Dell's Construction will run a wire system around the poles and clips to them, and that will help the netting live a lot longer. The usual lifetime of a net, I believe, is like twenty years, and the, and the wire system is going to help make sure that that lifespan is stretch of the limits, so to say. This picture on the left is another example of how the city contributed a great amount, and not even with physical tax dollars, was the in-kind donation that they did with Joel Schmidt and Shane Meyer really leading the charge, along with four of our college summertime employees, including my brother, spent the morning and afternoon one day digging up all the sprinkler system. And there was over fifty heads, I believe, that they had to dig up. So that was what it looked like the first day and a half. And then the picture on the right there is our final product. That is taken, I believe, last Thursday. And you can go to the next one, sir. And this is our final product from a different viewpoint. Magic Turf was able to get their drone up there. And what we ended up doing was a company from Shakopee, Brian Rock. They have a gentleman there by the name of Joey Fitzgerald, and he used to work with the Dodgers. And he also used to work with the Minnesota Sodding Company, the company we didn't go with. And Joy has been tremendous to work with as well. And he, and he started to design some clay amendments to put in the infield rock. And it was also, for the first time, installed in Hamel from this company, company Durag Edge, where we get the clay for the mountain home plate. They also make this product, but it was a little bit cheaper. And we thought it'd be easier to get more since the product is made in Shakopee. So what this new amendment will do in the infield is going to keep the surface a lot more playable. One of the problems we had with the, with the current egg line was we would get divots by second, third, and first base from runners sliding and just running the base pass, and it was very hard to maintain. This new material will almost surely not have that happen anymore if it's maintained as well. And there was also the idea that this product was moved or put in in Hamel about a month ago, and ended up getting two inches of rain and an hour after the rain left, there was no puddles on the field whatsoever. They were, they would be good to play if they had to. And so this will help. Hopefully, I don't have to go out there with a shot bat anymore and suck puddles out of the field when we're trying to get a playoff baseball game. So that's one of the big, biggest adjustments for me at the groundskeeper. It's always trying to make this facility the the easiest to maintain as possible. You know, I, I love spending time up there, but the, the more, you know, nonsense stuff you do, you know, you hate pulling every single little weed you see. You hate having to, you know, fill in with a wheelbarrow by second base to fill in a crater every single, or every other week at least. So this will make it a lot easier to maintain. The, the egg line in the infield, there were seventy-five tons taken out of it, and most of it was put in the warning track. And that's just from decades of hauling, hauling it down by a wheelbarrow and putting it in there trying to fill holes. The drainage is ten times over improved in both the infield and the outfield. Because the idea is that the water is supposed to run up into the foul territory, whether it's in the infield or in the outfield. That's the goal. So that, that's really our biggest thing with, with the field is always trying to make it improve. You know, we, we had, you know, I, I took Mr. Kirby out there the weekend before we started, and I was talking about the giant lips that we had out there that were very dangerous for our players. We literally had a kid take one out the chin from a, from ground ball in the infield the last game we had at the field. And so this will hopefully get rid of that problem, and it'll be very, I believe this is now one of the top playing services in the state of Minnesota right now. So any questions on what we've done?
Mr. Feeny, I want to personally thank you for all the work you've done on this. You approached Mr. Roby and myself about a year ago, a year and a half ago, about your plans, and you were kind of asking for astronomical amount of money from the city. And I think our message to you then was, Dylan, you're, you're a very articulate young man, and we know you're pretty good at raising the money. Why don't you see what you can raise and we'll see what we can do. You did a phenomenal, phenomenal job raising this money. You capitalized on every foundation, every group you could possibly imagine help with this. And you pulled a lot of, a lot of businesses in town into this too, so.
We, it, this is really a testament to, you know, how many of the great nonprofits we have, the great individuals we have, and the great businesses we have. This is, for as small a town as we have, the amount of giving, not only, not necessarily even with this, but with all the different organizations, initiatives we have in this community, it's amazing to see.
I've told you before, nothing pulls the community together more than baseball. So I appreciate all the work you've done. And again, this, this field is used by the high school. It's used by our baseball association. It's used by our, our little leagues. So you really made this the apple of the community. So thank you for that. I appreciate it, Dylan. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just had a question in front of the bleachers. You're going to put chain link back up? Or did you not take the chain link down?
Like the.
You know, in front of the bleachers?
On the third baseline?
You have one of the big bleachers?
The big one.
That's the, that's the backstop.
That's the back?
Yep, so that will be the plywood.
Right, I guess that's where the boys involved, that's the batch.
Yeah, yeah.
Catcher.
Yeah.
For the frans, we're still looking through chain link.
No, that, that's nothing.
It's all net.
That'll be net. Yeah.
All net.
Because there was chain link in front of that little shelter.
Yeah.
That's still there. But then the rest will be, in front of that giant grandstand will be.
Okay.
The net.
The net.
Yeah. So and that, and that's ideally what we like to look through. It's hard, not, not most fun to look through a chain link.
Yeah, but.
So.
Okay, we'll see how that unfolds up.
I hope a long time.
Yeah.
I have a question, questions. So I heard you say you took the sprinklers out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Shane Meyer and Joel Schmidt worked with Site One in Bell Plain, a gentleman named Chuck, who is a great friend of amateur baseball. And he came in and helped Joel and Shane and the other city staff put the heads back in. They looked through all the different heads, and then they moved some around, and then they put them in and made sure they were hitting everything. It's still a work in progress a little bit. We got a little bit, you know, if you look closely behind third base, you can see a little dry spot. But, you know, it's one of those things that it'll be fixed. But that was, you know, a small thing about, we didn't, we didn't redo the entire thing. We didn't overhaul the entire sprinkler system. We probably could have. But that was just not something that we thought was.
Piping and everything is the old stuff.
The piping, as far as we are concerned, we, we feel it's, it's in good shape. It was more the sprinkler heads that we were concerned about. So that was the adjustment, you know, making sure that they're just hitting everything, making sure that they're working properly. So that's something that we've worked hard the last two, three years with the city on, to make sure that these, for, and the city has been great with, with working on that.
And then I just had a question. I, you probably don't know this, but you said that you were listing this as, as an asset for the city. So what is the value of that asset now and then with the improvements? Do you know that?
I don't have to stop me head, though. I can, I can.
I don't have to stop me, I can I can find the value, the current value. Um but um as for future value, we'll let our insurance company know um about the improvements, share the information with them, and then they may update the value from that from an eligibility standpoint.
Okay. Dylan, thank you. Anybody else?
I do want to mention one more thing. Um you know, this is that where we're ending our upgrades to this field. Um we are held to the State American Legion Tournament in twenty twenty-seven. And one of our main goals is to make this facility the best gem we can make it. Um part of the upgrades we want to do is we want to enhance seating by third base there uh where those old wooden bleachers are. We want to fix and uh move some fencing around that area, move the bullpens around. Uh we've talked, I've talked with a local guy about um putting in some concrete in that area to help better maintain, especially the weeds. Um the weeds are one of my biggest enemies. And uh you know, between the city and the association, we can only do so much. Uh so hopefully that concrete can uh put a little debt in that work. Uh we also are going to be working with another local contractor on fixing the dugouts. Um and we want to make sure that they're safe. We want to put um to see again in target field and a lot of, there's almost every amateur field around. There's a railing with padding in front with a net. And that allows you to have more breathing room in your dugout, but also have enhanced safety, especially from a foul ball that might be going into your dugout. It's a little added protection there. Um we also have, we want to eventually replace um the small press box um because that's that's starting to decay a little bit more. Um but then we want to fix up our cabin cage area. But these little things, uh we hope to do at some point next year. And you know, I've talked to Mr. Roby and Mr. Kirby about it already and and Joel Schmidt as well about um setting aside possible funds for next year. Uh we haven't come up with any bids or anything yet. Uh we're just in that kind of idea stage right now. But this is something that if we're staying on timeline with twenty twenty-seven at an event that brings a lot of people to the town. Um you know, we want to make sure that we're doing this in timely manner, so.
Thank you, Mr. Peeny. I also want to add, you market this field very well too. Last year at this time, we grossed, was it uh
Oxenhead.
Oxenhead, country.
Town ball tour.
That that's what it was. Very well done. Thank you.
What I'm looking, always very more things, that's that, you know, you you build, you know, it's one thing to put all these upgrades in and then not do anything. But it's it's even better when you bring in uh teams from all over the state into the into the community, whether it's high school, American Legion, or town team. I haven't told my mom yet, but I'm hoping we get some town ball playoffs here next next year. She might not like that, but she has to do more work, but.
Well, good luck to you and now, thank you again for everything and we'll be working with you as we do.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eleanor.
Okay, with that, uh we're looking for uh watching for the Magic Turf payment application number one and also application number two. Except donation of funds from the Storm Baseball Association. So what? Anything, Councilmember Sullivan, Councilmember Williams, Scottson. Any comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
All right.
Anybody opposed? The highest. Moving on to uh item seven B, that'd be Resolution R twenty twenty-five dash zero three nine, this is great. And the Court Storm Sewer Improvement Project, uh Mr. Beanfang, how are you and what Mr. Robbie introduce you?
I'll make it real quick, Mr. Mayor. Um Beanfang, Mr. Transberger here tonight. Um uh Resolution R twenty twenty-five dash zero three nine addresses uh project at District Drive and Catalina Court specifically involving storm sewer infrastructure and some improvements that the city would like to pursue um in the context of a broader uh development that's taking place in that area right now. So with that, um I'll flip it to Mr. Beanfang and um you should have the way to flip.
All right, well, do you, oh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. It's been a little while, so it's good to be back here this evening. Um the project that I'll be speaking a little bit about is this District Drive Catalina Court. Um District Drive Ridge Road is a no unfamiliar topic here to the city and to council. Um but something that we we have been tracking um is in kind of consideration of an existing drainage concern that resided in this area kind of pre-development. Um and then admittedly, even through the improvements of the development uh through the process of design, working with that development team, there was kind of a real literal line that was being drawn as far as what was going to be a part of that initial construction work and and what was uh not going to be a part of that. And one of the not parts of that was this kind of legacy drainage concern up here really kind of premising with Catalina Court, this acknowledgement that um while there's curbing gutter and there's obviously um the two minute service in on Catalina, the drainage that's uncollected is just outletted via curb cut. Um and then it is uh overlay and flow conveyed then north to south. And on the picture here on kind of the middle part of the screen, that's looking up north, northerly to Catalina Court. So really defines swale through here. Um that's the that's the conveyance of that storm sewer uh within or the 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 drainage, the lack of storm sewer, but the drainage is being collected there via the curb of Catalina Court. And then that kind of then turns and then heads on right on the uh the limits of the ridge road development um down then ultimately, and it was collected via field tile kind of inlet with distal drive. And uh will be collected with the new design via by apron flare down section on the north side of distal drive. Um recognizing this concern, and we certainly, you know, knew of it as a staff level, but also had a lot of feedback in the review of the ridge road development and recognizing the ultimate solution and intention would be to extend storm sewer. In lieu of this overland conveyance, we would extend storm sewer that's now being provided and uh is accessible in distal drive. And we would be able to extend that up ultimately and 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 install a set of catch basins where that curb cut resides in Catalina. And foregoing this overland flow and and uh and conveying it via a pipe system. Um recognizing that the design in Ridge Road, um we, you know, had enough foresight and account, you know, accounted for the depth necessary to send the storm sewer. The the kind of the viability of the project was all ultimately the affordability. Um kind of first at the staff level, uh recognized with the way that the Zion bid uh bid came in where we were uh you know, resulting in some material savings there from what is deemed the utility project, primarily storm sewer project there. We thought we would go onto the market and and uh see what we could quote this project at. Recognizing the ideal time to do this improvements would be pre-houses constructed out here, pre, you know, full restoration. I'm really kind of capitalizing on this this ongoing construction. And the picture on the bottom right hand is looking then kind of in the middle um looking southerly towards distal drive and kind of this admittance that, you know, that ideal opportunity to do this continued utility work would be would be right now. You don't mind, Joe? So we uh we put together a whole package. Um a lot of this, we had, you know, kind of framed with the development review process to make sure this was viable and feasible. Um so really, it was a pretty efficient process to get this out. Um we elected to go quotes, just the most efficient way we could uh get this out and get a competitive market price on it. Um we are allotted with the the city purchasing policy based on project price to to do that. Um we we kind of handpicked some of our lowest quotas on our project, uh existing contractors. Um the contractor that's doing Zion Church, the contractor that's doing the distal uh the the ridge road development as a behalf of developer, and a couple other local contractors, just really kind of trying to take a value uh of the lowest possible quote. And we received that lowest quote from WW Blacktopping. Um that's on the screen there, so they are the lowest of the four. We received a quote back from all four contractors and we had in the council packet there, you know, it's had quite quite a spread. Um with the highest quote being the the contractor that's actually doing the development project, so a little bit of a surprise there, but um WW was a low quote. Um and then we've got a total project cost that um we're estimating with some contingency. We're certainly hoping that that comes in under that, but right now estimating from a budgetary standpoint, that's what project costs ninety-five thousand. Um and then WW, we have no concerns of them. They've done work in the community. They did our first three street utility project, uh our street maintenance projects. And so those had a storm sewer component, all of them, and um so no concerns really on their ability to deliver this work. So really, next up then um is consideration of council tonight to to accept and ultimately award that quote to WW. Um right now, we're in the the intense utility phase of the ridge road development. So they started last week, obviously rain has been a little bit of a detriment there in the progress. It's a really heavy soiled area, um so very rain susceptible on like North Fourth Street, that's sandy. So we've got these very distinct pockets of material and the sewer in this area is is more of the the heavy clay. Um those utilities are going to continue to progress here entering August next month. Those will can uh those will progress for the majority of August, I would expect, at least three weeks. Um and we need those utilities in in order for us to extend this system. And so right now, we're really recognizing that that September window would be ideal to do this work. Um in hopefulness that we could capitalize and and try to get some turf restored, certainly in that existing backyard area there immediately south of Catalina Court. Um provided tonight, and council supports this idea of a move forward with this project. We hold a pre-construction meeting um for for the neighbors that are directly impacted with this project. And then hoping to be substantially complete this fall. And then um you know, that idea of if we need to and and ensuring that grass is properly restored, we would then hold hold the quarter of contract open till till, you know, spring, early summer of next year. So in summary, uh quotes were solicited for this project to uh move forward on on a storm sewer improvement that we really feel like completes this area and certainly addresses uh, you know, what we're aware of as kind of all of the area-wide drainage concerns. So obviously, the establishment of the pond, the extension of storm sewer system was really the trigger to to have a a long-term solution for this and recognizing that those things were in in play. This would be the final piece to that. Uh we feel like the project is feasible, it's it's affordable, kind of really looking at the budget, some of those savings from these other planned projects. Um I feel like the ideal time is to to complete that work this year um as part of that kind of greater uh area improvement. So I'm happy to entertain any questions uh that the council may have or uh and then provided uh provide a may well answer all those questions if there are any, they're being asked to consider Resolution twenty-five oh three nine tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Beanfang. I can't help but think of mostly the existing residents up there in the distal drive and and Ridge Road area, they're pretty excited about this.
It's it's certainly something that we heard, I think, initially at the very onset of this idea of the development, you know, uh recognizing that change was a very fundamental um item discussed. It was also this this kind of legacy drainage concern. Um you know, just the the idea of a of a of a, you know, maybe insufficient drainage at times, but the the quantity of drainage is also a concern. Um it's witnessable where where some properties have taken upon themselves to kind of barrier their property, create some berm in and such to kind of, you know, and I guess live with and kind of allow for this overland system to to be functional. So um we are, we are, we have other overland systems in the community. We probably could debate the rest of the evening about the successfulness of them conveying water and and kind of the acceptance of the adjacent properties to that. So I think anytime, you know, you can you can identify a solution that's underground. Um it feels like you're you're in a more favorable condition for sure, and I think this is about as literal to that as as you can get here.
And and no doubt to come back and do this two or three years, it might be extremely expensive.
Yeah, I think there's a cost, there's a there's an inconvenience, there's a there's an optics to it. Um you know, I think there's a cost just in the way that it seems that these projects continue to escalate in price. Um so it feels like the timing i- is really ideal. Uh you know, the ultimate kind of foundational feasibility we planned for that it could be completed in the future, I think, with some events, we weren't sure if we could do it as soon as, you know, the same year as the development. Uh we have easements to allow for uh this storm sewer to be placed. But it certainly feels like the idea of of starting to build homes and um and uh, you know, get turf restored and really establish that development as a part of this community. It would be a little unfavorable, come in two, three years later and and start taking that up again. So I think the timing feels feels very ideal if it's able to 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 be accepted and affordable.
Thank you. Just a real quick question for Mr. Ruby, if you want to reiterate the funds for this or not.
That's correct, yes. So um we did budget, we have budgeted funds for twenty twenty-five and the storm water uh fund with cash for uh for this project, not knowing at the time, uh the timing of the development, certainly nor the the scale scope or what the market would do. Um so we do have some funds uh that are currently earmarked for storm water.
Thirty thousand?
Yes, so thirty thousand dollars that was in the budget already. Um and then uh remaining cash, cash uh budget, twenty twenty-five capital for the storm water management plan that is not uh that's expand uh extended. Expended yet. Um and so the proposal would be to to pay cash for it using storm water fund, uh which notably is something that the city has done, I think, in just about every year that we've had the storm water fund with capital uh with capital budget, is establish capital budget with some very specific items in it. And every year, we've had something come up, uh whether it's a an emergency failure of storm sewer or it's repairs on Docky Lane every May two summers ago where it was recognized that there's a storm water project that is um a higher need or higher priority uh that should appropriately use storm water funds for. Uh and I would absolutely put this project in that category, that there is no better time to do this project than right now, and since we have the cash to do it um as part of the capital budget, even though it's for apartments for a different project that um certainly defendable to do it and uh it would be very difficult to come back later and and try to do the same work.
Okay, so my question is, uh we we, I thought we earmarked money for the storm sewer survey or to do a whole plan, does it take that off the table? No, we can't do it.
No, it it doesn't. That's a good question. Um so so for that, uh it's actually, there's a reversible grant component uh to that that study. So we had put in the budget um the uh entirety of of that plan, assuming we we, it's probably we have to, we have to pay for all of it. Um we know now that we're receiving grant funds for it to reimburse us. Um and just timing that project, um it's the preliminary works started, um but the the real meat and potatoes of that study hasn't kicked off yet. So while we'll ultimately have to fund all of it upfront, we will be reimbursed uh for a good portion of that, the study when it's all said and done.
Can you go back to the picture and the drawings?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to ask for.
Um so like, I don't, I don't even know what that is. Is the Catalina Court a new street or something?
Catalina Court's an existing street in Distal's second subdivision. Um also first subdivision, I guess. Um so at the end, in the southern end, near the southern point of uh Ridge Road, where Ridge Road currently extends off to the east side. There's this called Circus Canada Court. So when you're looking on the screen there, you're looking almost to east, north, east, northeast?
Yeah, so I, uh, north, north is
I have it.
North is black.
East is up with the point. So this would connect Catalina, Storm, Storm Green, that would connect um Catalina Court to the storm sewer back structures.
This is the new development, so would that be going between decades?
So that's this line?
Yeah, so where the trees are, that's the existing, I'll call it the existing development. That's the picture there in the middle, so that's the the witnessable kind of grass backyard that is existing. Um and then there'd be a portion then, kind of the southerly portion, if you want to reference it as that. That would be ordering an existing home on the east and a new lot as part of the Ridge Road on the west.
So you're gonna want to dig underground and put a substantial pipe or?
Uh see, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily call it substantial in the sense of size, but we we have, I believe it's a fifteen and a twelve or an eighteen and a fifteen, I I forget exactly, but that's what we want to do so that it's a, it's a little unique, there's not only the, you know, I'll call it kind of the yard drainage component to the swaled system, but uh Ri- Ridge Road has some drainage that then ultimately is outletting down and through Catalina Court. So there is a larger kind of sewer watershed system here that Catalina Court is collecting and ultimately conveying to the south. And that's happening through the backyards right now. Um and so the idea would be to to be able to collect that in Catalina. There's gonna still be some drainage through the yards that would be conveyed overland, but the bulk of the roadway drainage would be collected in a in a catch basin and storm pipe system uh that's more consistent uh with with uh what you, which would you deem an ideal kind of practice of conveying water?
So you said, I'm sorry, roadway water would be from the new construction of new roadway?
Both, both in some arguments. So uh Ridge Road at the current uh at the current dead end now today, that that does drain actually back to the north and around Catalina Court. There'll be a high point that'll be established pretty near where the road will be extended from. Then that drainage will extend to the south or or be conveyed to the south to a low point. And so ultimately, all this area is trying to go south to the ravine. Just everything now that is kind of in this proximity of this existing, plus the new will be collected, routed to a storm water pond and then released to the ravine. So so it was a lack of storm sewer infrastructure up here that didn't allow this problem to be solved in a pipe system until the original development uh till the original development materialized. There's no existing storm sewer in a close proximity to allow for this storm sewer extension to be to be affordable and and really feasible. Um which is not unlike other areas in the community, but this was one where we had the opportunity of this development to to uh to to make the extension possible.
Anybody have any questions? If not, um we'll move on to the motion or action required. I'm looking for a motion to approve uh I'm looking for a motion to approve, uh, resolution R twenty twenty-five, yes, zero three nine. Setting the course forty-one project totaling seventy-eight thousand four hundred fourteen dollars eighty cents for distal drive and Catalina Court storm sewer improvement to WW Blacktopping. So thank you, Councilmember Sullivan.
Second.
Councilmember Schiller seconded. Any other comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Moving on to item seven C, the twenty twenty-four financial audit. Mr. Ruby want to start with that?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, the city principal auditor, Andy Grace, is on the line. Um, I am going to presentation capabilities. Andy, you should be able to hear any time now.
All right. Is my presentation coming up okay?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. Typically they're in person, but appreciate the flexibility here presenting virtually. Um, here to present the audit results for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, wanted to start by highlighting, um, our independent auditors report. So, uh, start with that here first. Uh, that independent auditor's report is included in the city's financial statements and highlights what our role as your auditor uh, is, as well as the role of management and that it is management's responsibility to prepare the financial statements. And it's our job as your auditor to provide an assurance on those financial statements through our audit opinion as to whether they present fairly in all material respects and happy to present that we are, uh, providing a clean or an unmodified opinion uh, on those financial statements, which is the best that we can give as your auditor. But we also have two other reports, uh, one being our government auditing standards report. And that report talks about internal control over financial reporting. And we had two findings to report this year. Uh, one related to a lack of segregation of accounting duties and the other, uh, related to mere, uh, material audit adjustments. Uh, the last report is our report on Minnesota legal compliance, uh, where we report on certain state statutes included in the Office of the State Auditor's, uh, legal compliance guides. And we had no findings to report for this year. Uh, the last piece of communication is our communications letter. Uh, that includes all required communication in accordance with audit standards, but also, uh, highlights, uh, certain trends through charts and graphs. Uh, and, and we, uh, do have some of those to, uh, highlight with you here tonight. I wanted to start by taking a look at the performance in the general fund, uh, first, uh, by taking a look at the, uh, budget that city council approved. Uh, and that budget called for two point seven million dollars in revenue. Uh, three point one, uh, we have a little bit of a typo there. It's three point one million, uh, dollars in expenditures. And after net transfers, uh, of about three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, uh, anticipated no change in fund balance for the year. Uh, when we take a look at actual results, actual revenues came in at, uh, three point one million dollars, uh, about, uh, four hundred nineteen thousand dollars higher than anticipated. And that was mainly driven by intergovernmental revenues with, uh, grants and aids, uh, be, uh, being, uh, budgeted conservatively. Actual expenditures came in at about three point seven million dollars. That was five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, uh, uh, over budget. Uh, majority of that had to do with the IT fund expenditures, uh, which are ultimately included in the general fund, uh, for financial reporting purposes, but are not included as part of the, the budgeting process. So it did cause a variance there. Uh, also saw a, a variance related to the Emerald, Emerald Ash Board, uh, tree removal, um, um, uh, costs, uh, that, that were not part of the budget here for this year. And then also, uh, did have some public safety, uh, capital cost that contributed, uh, to that variance as well. Uh, when taking a look at net transfers in from other funds, I did have some additional transfers approved during two thousand twenty-four, ultimately driving a, a positive variance there of about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, which led to a ninety thousand dollar surplus in fund balance overall, uh, increasing, uh, fund balance to just under one point six million dollars. Uh, the unrestricted portion of fund balance represents about tw- fifty-two percent of twenty twenty-four budgeted expenditures, which is in line with the city's policy. And also just wanted to highlight that about fourteen percent of the inflows in the general fund do come from, uh, via transfers from the electric fund. So, uh, just wanted to, uh, highlight that as, as a future, uh, future planning, uh, needs to consider that, uh, portion of the budget and, and the resources that might be available from that electric fund in future years. Uh, the remaining charts and graphs, again, uh, highlight the general fund, but also go into the, um, enterprise funds as well. So here is a five-year history of general fund revenues, expenditures, net transfers, as well as the fund balance and the fund balance ratio. Uh, if all city services were domain constant, we would still expect to see, you know, small increases, uh, each year. Uh, due to just inflationary, um, increases overall. I'm gonna try and, 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 uh, edit this here quick. Just with the, with the network connection, want to make sure that comes through. Okay. So one second here. I'm not hearing any audio. Just wanted one confirmation if you can still hear me. Okay.
Yeah. Amy Long, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that. So again, um, you just highlighting the, the five-year history here of the general fund. Um, you know, since two thousand twenty, twenty, twenty-one timeframe, we have seen, um, kind of incremental increases in revenues and expenditures. Uh, the COVID nineteen funding, uh, was provided back in that twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one timeframe. So did see elevated, uh, revenues, uh, as a result of that. But here in twenty twenty-four, again, did see an overall increase in fund balance with the surplus in operations for this year. Also wanted to highlight the overall makeup of general fund revenues and how those have changed over the last couple of years. Uh, overall has remained fairly, uh, consistent. Um, we did see, um, that, um, property taxes continue, uh, you know, to, um, uh, be about forty percent of overall general fund revenues, uh, uh, decreasing from forty, uh, from forty percent down to about thirty-seven percent. Uh, and then, um, also wanted to highlight the intergovernmental, uh, portion, you know, which is the most significant portion of general fund revenues making up about fifty-three percent. Uh, the general fund budget actual results are, uh, highlighted here on this next chart that we did, uh, cover that in summary already. So just wanted to provide that just for reference purposes. Uh, next wanted to just take a look at, uh, oh, go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead.
Oh, I thought there was a question there. Sorry about that. Uh, next just taking a look at the makeup of general fund expenditures. A majority of, uh, general fund expenditures go to public safety services, which make up approximately, um, uh, forty-seven percent here in two thousand twenty-four of general fund expenditures compared to about forty-six percent. Uh, did see a little bit, uh, that elevate a little bit this year, just with the, the capital cost. But again, all other cat categories fairly consistent with the prior year. Uh, the next chart I wanted to take a look at is just highlighting the tax capacity, tax levy and tax rate. Uh, so that tax levy, uh, uh, did increase here in two thousand twenty-four from about three point five million up to three point seven million. But that was consistent with the increase in tax capacity, which is tied to market values within the city. And as a result, uh, the tax capacity rate has remained fair, uh, uh, remained flat at about eighty-two percent between twenty-three, uh, and twenty-four. Uh, the next chart, uh, starts to highlight the city's enterprise funds. Uh, these use some different terminology here because these are full accrual funds. And so it includes things like depreciation expense. Uh, and when we take a look at operations here for twenty twenty-four, we did see a surplus in the water fund of about eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Uh, and as a result of that, we did see an increase in the unrestricted net position, increasing from three point six million, uh, to four point two million dollars at the end of the year. The next chart highlights the sewer utility fund. Uh, this fund did experience, uh, a significant deficit dating back to two thousand twenty-one of about two point five million dollars. And after some, uh, changes in rates and oper-, uh, you know, other operations there did, uh, uh, did start seeing, uh, surpluses of, uh, excess of one million dollars back in two thousand twenty-two and continued to see that here in twenty twenty-four with the highest surplus, uh, of, uh, just under one point five million dollars. And that brought this funds, uh, unrestricted net position from a negative one, uh, two point five million back in twenty twenty-one, uh, continuing to move in the right direction at a negative about one point six million dollars here for twenty twenty-four. Uh, the next chart highlights the electric utility fund. Uh, this fund also experienced some changes in rates and operations dating back to the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, uh, timeframe, uh, which did generate, uh, some surpluses, uh, in this fund of about, uh, about one point, uh, five million dollars. And that did increase, uh, here in two thousand twenty-four to about two point four million dollars. And as a result, uh, there was an increase in the unrestricted net position in this fund from four point two million, uh, to just over six million dollars at the end of the year. Uh, the last one I wanted to highlight is the community center fund. Uh, this is an, a governmental fund, but, uh, was in a deficit, uh, financial position or did have a, a deficit fund balance, uh, the most significant being back in two thousand twenty-one of about seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Uh, this fund has continued to improve since that time and, and is actually, um, at the lowest point in terms of a, a fund balance deficit in the years presented. Uh, and did improve from negative, uh, six hundred and twelve thousand dollars to a negative five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars here for two thousand twenty-four. Uh, that's a high level, uh, high level look at the audit results as, as well as some financial information here for the year ended, uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, next you'd just like to open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grace. You gave a very thorough report. Um, I, I talked to Mr. Ruby and we kind of summarized, uh, what was going to be said tonight. And, uh, I kind of compared it to like a physical at Mayo Clinic. Uh, would you, would you say that this community is, uh, pretty financially healthy?
Yes, I think, you know, when, uh, there's so many different pieces there, you know, to take a look at. And, and, and so when it comes to the general fund governmental activities, you know, just kind of highlighting, you know, where some of those resources are coming from, from a budget planning, you know, perspective. And, and, you know, our role as your auditor is, is not to necessarily, you know, report on how well the, the city is doing, doing, but how accurate your financial statements are. And, and so, you know, we, we're continuing to, to, to give that clean opinion and that, uh, we did find that those financial statements are properly, uh, presented. Uh, and, and, you know, in terms of a fund balance policy, you know, that's a, a good metric to use in terms of financial health. Are you continuing to budget for and, and, and establish those reserves, uh, you know, for, you know, any challenges or unforeseen circumstances? And, and the city is, uh, uh, continuing to be in compliance with that policy. The only, you know, other thing to highlight, there's just those enterprise funds is those, you know, typically do have some, uh, fairly expensive infrastructure needs. Uh, you know, in terms of planning and, and taking a look at what those needs look like in the future, you know, whether any further reserves will be established for those or whether, you know, whether external or third-party financing might be needed for those. I think those are, are good and healthy conversations to have, uh, when it comes to those.
Thank you. And I trust, uh, financial director, Mr. Graff and, uh, city administrator, Mr. Ruby, were most helpful and compliant with you.
Yeah, yeah. They, they were great to work with, uh, as always. So appreciate all, uh, all their help in the audit process this year.
Anybody else? Mr. Grace, uh, I want to thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions from the rest of the council. Uh, as always, I, I hear from you every year and I appreciate your help with this.
Thanks for having me. Thank you.
Take care. Thank you. And there is no action needed on this, Mr. Ruby?
Correct, Mr. Grant. Thank you.
We'll let you get signed off there and and Mr. take us into agenda, item seven C, that'd be the airport land acquisition contract amendment. Mr. Ruby, you want to summarize this for us?
I would think, uh, somewhat of a housekeeping item, uh, hence its presence as item seven D and not A or C. Way, way back in twenty twenty-three, the airport commission city council approved professional services contract with S E H, S E H. Sure, there's services are airport engineer, civil service for airport. And the contract, uh, for professional services with S E H was, uh, involved the acquisition of some, uh, land just adjacent to the thirteen thirty-one runway at the airport covering what's known as the building restriction line, which is a line surrounds the airport in zoning terms that has some extraordinary, um, building restrictions. Um, and was considered at that time by the airport commission and city council to be a priority in terms of acquisition. And there was a, a landowner surrounding the airport that was interested in conveying property, um, to the city and, um, to cover that area. The FAA and MINDAD will ultimately reimburse the city ninety-seven point five percent of all expenses. That includes, uh, all the engineering, all the professional services, all the title work and the purchase price of the land. Um, so as I said, the, in twenty twenty-three, the city council, uh, approved this contract with S E H to cover all the professional services. As part of the work with the FAA, uh, there have been some additional, uh, title research items that have come up. Um, in order for the, in order for the city to be reimbursed for those eventually, uh, to ninety-seven percent. The, uh, city council would need to consider an amendment to the, to the contract. So it's the front council's nice contract, you know, number one, uh, for an additional estimated fee of one thousand five hundred dollars for the additional title work, uh, for which we would ultimately submit for reimbursement from the FAA and MINDAD.
Mr. Ruby, anybody have any questions for him regarding this subject? Now, if there's no questions, I will entertain any motion to approve contract. And then the number one, I'll present two. Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Councilmember Williams, thank you. You have a questions, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. This takes it into, uh, reports and items of appreciation. Councilmembers is directly sure what's going on with your commissions, what's going on with the community as always. So, Councilmember Huntington.
I'm good enough, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, can I, Councilmember, uh, Yelson?
Um, I did go to that M N P A. The banquet and the tour of their facility. That was very interesting. Learned a lot about how they, uh, work. So, yeah. And then just the street project. It's done. Uh, it's gorgeous. Looks great. So, that's nice.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Schiller.
I attended the county commissioners meeting on the fifteenth to hear MINDAD district seventh Mexican year capital highway improvement plan. I attended the coalition of greater Minnesota city summer conference last week in Gomitji. And the E D A meeting earlier tonight where they started the process on the tip district for the park departments. As Administrator Boll mentioned, entered into a grant agreement on an updated housing study and recommended a grant award acceptance for the Leach Park upgrades. Also, there's a lease or county officials meeting Wednesday, the thirtieth in Cleveland.
Thank you. Councilmember, um, Sullivan, I have nothing tonight. Councilmember Williams.
I'd like to reiterate what Joe said about somewhere in the valley. It's a very good, um, event and appreciate the public work cleaning up the landscape area. We did a nice job. So appreciate that. I did attend a hospital combined boards meeting that, um, turned a day. Been felt by, um, really there to report.
Thank you. I just want to take a quick opportunity to, uh, encourage everybody to help and celebrate the giant celebration this weekend. It's always fun to, uh, to attend that. Um, I can't believe we're this far into the summer already. And I want to give a little, uh, shout out to our LaSueur Police Department. I got a text from Terry Turk earlier today. And I guess his wife got locked out of her car making. They were most helpful getting her back home. So whatever they did, we, we appreciate it and thank you. And lastly, to the people of LaSueur, um, thanks for your patience with this fourth street project. I see we got the pavement down on the first part of that project. We still got a little bit further to go past St. Anne's School, but, uh, I know it's been a, um, kind of a hassle to get around that all summer, but, uh, we're getting there. So with that said, I will entertain a motion and tonight's made. Thank you. All those in favor?